Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the City Council Chamber here at City Hall. Tonight's City Council meeting is called to order. Following the City Council meeting, of course, is the Committee of the Whole Meeting. So with that, we invite our City Clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Bruno, here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarag?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
We begin our City Council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite, let's see, wherever she went to, Jackie Bowling to please lead us in the pledge. Where's Jackie? There you are.
Oh, there she is.
We'll follow your lead, Jackie.
Great. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bowling. And our first item of business, folks, is to introduce to all of you and everyone tuning in, City of Geneva's new historic preservation planner, Jackie Bowling. Ms. Bowling, please join us at the podium. And we have to define the word "new," so how new are you? Look at me!
Oh, wow! [laughter] Um, I started working here the second week of June.
Holy moly!
Yes.
Now, I've got some information about you. I need you to verify this information.
Absolutely.
You attended the Savannah College of Art and Design?
That is correct.
You love Christmas?
That's what they say.
Well, "they," you already have a Christmas tree up in your office, don't you?
Yes, I do.
And you love geese?
I wouldn't say that I'm a fan of geese. However, I do have a porch goose in my office.
Do you enjoy geese for Christmas dinner?
Never had one.
And you have two little dogs?
I do.
And I hear the names of these dogs are priceless. What are they?
They're Trixie and Cletus.
For the record, please explain why.
Yeah, actually, so I used to work for Disney, and I don't know if you've ever done the Country Bear Jamboree. Trixie St. Clair is one of the bears there. I'm also from the country, so Trixie was cool. And then there's a bear called Cletus, and it was the only boy name, and I have a boy dog, so it was fitting.
So they're named after a...
They are named after an animatronic bear show.
An animatronic, which song sends people into all sorts of issues.
Well, they recently changed it, so I can't confirm.
You asked the question.
[laughs]
Are you a big Disney fan?
Surprisingly, no. I did work there.
You worked for Disney?
I actually...
This is being televised, by the way.
Hey, everyone! [laughter] I needed an internship before I graduated from my undergrad, and I was like, Disney sounds fun.
Was it fun?
It was fun.
What else should we know about you? I mean, you and I have met several times, of course. The council, perhaps this might be the first time.
Okay.
But you come with us with extraordinary expertise, professionalism. You've dipped your toe into the water of historic preservation already in our fine community.
Mm-hmm.
So far, so good?
So far, so good. It's been wonderful.
Good, good. And what's surprised you most about our community?
Honestly, that you guys have been so friendly. Every person that I've worked with at the city, as well as the people that live in Geneva, have been superior, top-notch. So it's been fun to work with.
That's about the change right now when we start to ask a couple of questions.
Oh, no, okay.
Uh, family?
I have some. [laughter]
Do you have an attorney present with you tonight? Or something we have to...
[laughs]
She's answering only what's asked.
And where's the family?
They're currently in Savannah, Georgia.
They are. Now, Savannah's a pretty cool place.
It is.
Yeah, very cool place. And what was your... Did you work in Savannah as well, or just attend school?
I did. I worked there. I worked specifically on Tybee Island. It's a little 15, 20-minute drive from Savannah. I worked with their Historic Preservation Commission.
Wow.
So that was a lot of fun. I also worked in Savannah for the Historic Savannah Foundation.
Oh, wow.
I was their easement intern, so...
Hold on, hold on. Easement intern?
Oh, thank you for asking. Um...
We're all so thrilled about this. It's like, what is an easement intern?
Um, so essentially, in Savannah, there are some houses, I think it's about 400-ish properties, that have easements, and every year, they send out interns and employees to essentially check to make sure that the houses are looking good, you've kept your porch on.
Oh, wow.
Which actually, there was a missing porch one year, so that was fun. But I was essentially responsible for looking at the houses, taking pictures of the houses, and then I would report back to the owners how their house was.
Whether there would be deficiencies or...
Correct.
Who put on this addition?
Yes.
That kind of thing.
Where did the porch go? That was a big problem.
Is this why you started to enjoy porch geese?
I would say yes.
So you notice that I tie all that in?
Yeah.
Is that legit?
Um, no. So I don't see it as frequently up here, but in Savannah, people have a lot of porch geese, and they decorate them. I had one. I don't have a porch to put my porch goose on. I live in an apartment, so I put it in my office.
Well, thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Is historic preservation similar everywhere?
No, very different. I think, in America specifically, I think historic preservation, we follow the same standards, but each town, city, parish, they all kind of do it differently.
Is that different? Is that... Those differences complicated for professionals like you? Or is it, hey, I'm here, this is how they do it, and I'll operate within those boundaries?
I would say, if you have set rules, it's just easier to operate in the boundary.
Got it. Are you familiar with WGN Television?
No.
So you don't know what the name of the goose was? Does anybody else know? What was it?
Garfield.
No, not Garfield.
Chauncey.
Very good. Alder Person Swanson, what was it?
Chauncey.
Chauncey, the geese. Remember that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No.
No.
I don't. Sorry.
Well, council, any comments, questions for our historic preservation planner? We are delighted to have you on board.
Thank you.
Yeah, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now you can sneak the heck out.
[laughter]
Stage left, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Jackie. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Marx makes the motion, Pashki makes the second. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda has been approved with nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes. We jump to item number eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our City Clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment.
Oops.
Total $2,033,636.37.
Mayor, I move to approve and pay the bills, the individual items for which can be found in tonight's packet on the city's website.
Alder Person Bowring makes the motion to approve the bills as presented, which are also available in each council member's packet and on the city's website. Seconded by Alder Person Casarag. Roll call, clerk.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
The bills have been approved for payment with nine affirmative votes and zero nay votes. My error, I skipped over item seven, reports. 7A is the fiscal year '25 second quarter goals status report. A motion to accept would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Bowring, seconded by Mayor. Any questions, any comments? Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye to accept the report.
Aye.
Bruno, aye.
Anyone opposed? With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, the report is accepted. Item nine, ladies and gentlemen, Committee of the Whole, items of business, 9A. Consider resolution number 2024-108, authorizing execution of a tourism-investment agreement between Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau and the City of Geneva. Bowring makes the motion. Pashki makes the second. Ms. Dawkins, is there anything you'd like to add?
Okay, so the city collects a 5% municipal operator occupation tax, also known as the hotel motel tax. As a non-home rule municipality, the city has limited authority to expend these funds solely to promote tourism and conventions or otherwise attract non-resident overnight visitors. Convention and visitors bureaus are certified by and receive funds from the state to provide such services to participating municipalities. CVBs also receive hotel tax contributions from municipal partners. Geneva is contiguous to the service area of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and aligning with the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau will help structure Geneva to reach the market sector with the greatest likelihood of needing overnight accommodations. Working with the AACBB will elevate Geneva to a regional tourism force, provide opportunities to collaborate with municipal, state, and industry partners, and leverage state and local funds. The AACBB can deliver services requested by the taxpayer, restore taxpayer accountability, allow data-driven marketing decisions, and bring forward professional representation of Geneva hotels and venues in sports, group travel tours, motor coach, leisure travel, and meetings for RFP response and trade show representation. The agreement is included within your packet along with some letters of support, and for additional questions or comments, we do have a representative from the CBB and our Economic Development Director, Kathleen Timoshenko.
From the dais, anyone? Alder Person Kilburg?
There's certainly been a lot of communication as it relates to this subject over the last few weeks, and I know that at a recent meeting, we had on the agenda the grant program that would play into this to some extent as it relates to our own Chamber of Commerce. I guess my question is, is how far are we along with the grant program, and have we had discussions with the chamber as it relates to the grant program, and what is its status? Because I feel that it would be in the best interest of the community if we move these to, as it relates to the grant program in relationship to the chamber and the Aurora program, together simultaneously.
Forgive me, Mr. Alder Person, but the discussion item tonight is regarding the agreement with the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, not the City of Geneva's proposed grant program. So we should focus on only that item, which is described in item 9A.
Okay.
I'm happy to address it in a statement I have, but I'll wait till everyone else has a chance to speak.
Okay. Okay, then I'll pass then at this time, and if there's other members of the dais that have things that they want to share, then I might have a thought at the end as well.
Anyone else? Alder Person Bruno, remotely. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Not too shabby.
Okay. I've just been considering this. I've been very interested in this, what I think is a better holistic regional approach. You know, there's the... The points against it, I think, aren't bad questions, but I think the net positives here are worth pursuing this. Talked to others in other communities, they're happy with it, so I think it's worth our giving it a shot. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the dais? If not, Alder Person Casarag?
Yeah, I'm picking up a little bit on Alderman Kilburg here. I...
Be careful not to go down the same path, otherwise you'll be ruled...
I'm just going to call it effects of moving this along, not effects.
The floor is yours, but I have the right to caution you about jumping into what is not on the agenda.
Well, it's directly, to me, related to the Aurora Area CBB, which is, I just don't think the timing's right to pass this along right now. I think there's other issues that need to be considered before this is executed. I think there's a lot of questions from the public that need to be educated, and that's why I'm going to be voting against it tonight. I just think we're jumping the gun here on a major policy change for the City of Geneva, which is how we fund our tourism overall. And I wouldn't argue that the CBB can't be part of that, but I think that we need to look at it, I think, in Alderman Kilburg's words and others in the past, holistically. And so this incremental sort of step in the way that we do our tourism funding, I just don't think it's prudent at this time. I will say, I don't think this is a defunding of the Chamber of Commerce, as I heard a lot over the weekend. I think that it has an effect on the funding, though, on the distribution of responsibilities of who does what, and all those things need to be figured out as a whole. And I would propose, and what I would like to see, is maybe asking the Aurora CBB to hold on, maybe for a few more months, while we can put our plan together and then move forward on that and anything else that might be related to tourism and our participation with the Aurora CBB. But I, again, I just want to emphasize, I don't think this is a defunding of the chamber. I think we're all committed here as a council and staff, and I do believe that we're all want to do the best that we can to the Chamber of Commerce. And so I don't think there's justification for that kind of talk about defunding. But otherwise, I just think the timing's ill-advised. So thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Swanson, then Alder Person Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what Alder Person Casarag stated, that a delay in approving this would be warranted until we figure out all of our marketing plans. The plan before us tonight is offering 60% of the hotel tax to the Aurora CBB, wherein the past, we had been giving 60% of our hotel tax to the Chamber of Commerce. So the two are linked, and I think we do need to look at them holistically. It's been stated that time is of the essence for this plan because of a strategic plan. I disagree with that, and we just completed a strategic plan for the City of Geneva, and it was drilled into us that this is a living, breathing document that's going to change over time as facts and circumstances change. I would say to the Aurora CBB, that's same for us. If we join you next year, then change your strategic plan. I don't think we have to rush to get this in, particularly since we've been talking about this plan since 2021. So for three years, we've been talking about it, now all of a sudden, it's coming, and we have to say, approve it now so we can get in on the ground level of strategic plan. I disagree with that. I think we should look at it in more detail and answer some of the questions. We received a lot of other... It was mentioned, Stephanie mentioned that we have support, letters of support from some taxpayers. We received a lot over the weekend. Are those in the packet as well, or will those be posted?
The letters of support were the ones that were sent to the city that are from the hotels that pay the tax.
They don't pay it, they collect it.
Well, they collect it, and then they remit it to the city. The question is whether the ones that were sent from the chamber to the city, if you want those included, they can be included as well.
I have no objection to any letter being sent on behalf of or opposed to.
I think they should be.
That's fine, and we'll be addressing those letters momentarily, so...
Okay. We represent all of the businesses that make their home in Geneva, not just the hotel. And our marketing plan impacts everybody. And I see, for our festivals and the marketing plan that might be local and might not get heads in beds, still having a benefit to the hotels in the future. Perhaps not on a particular night, but it's bringing a lot of people in who may come back or bring their family and see. So I think we should look at this holistically and determine how much we're going to spend locally, how much we're going to spend in a regional marketing effort. So I agree by, I will be voting against approving this tonight. I think we should look at all of our marketing plans together. Thank you.
Alder Person Mayor?
Thank you. I think that we've talked about this numerous times over the past three years that I've been on council, and it's always been explained to us that the hotel motel tax is for heads in beds, and it's... It may be... There may be some semantics around how that is said, but it is, I believe, the hotel owners that should have the primary say in how this moves forward. And I think the Aurora CBB, from everything I've seen, looks great. They do a lot more than what's just on their website. There's a lot of great benefits, as we've been... As has been explained to us several times. I think that the letters that matter here are from the hotel owners, and as I understand it, there's a lot of, in addition to those that are opposed within the chamber, there are quite a few people that support this, that have other businesses than hotels in Geneva. So I remain supporting of this move. Thank you.
Alder Person Bowring, then Pashki.
So I'm also very supportive of joining the Aurora Area CBB. As Alder Person Mayor noted, since I came on the council almost a year and a half ago, I've been made aware of this almost from the first meeting, I think I had with staff, that this was coming down the pike. It's true that I did not get the full set of details until they were shared with us in the packet for the COW, but I do feel like the questions that have been posed have been answered, particularly related to, you know, why this is a good idea, how it is likely to bring more heads to beds, which I think is an important consideration. And I think that the presentation, both by our staff and the staff of the CBB at the COW, was very illuminating in terms of what the CBB can offer us, that only something like a regional group can offer us. I think that the city is very interested in continuing to work with the chamber going forward, but I'm pretty reluctant to try to link this discussion with any other decisions the city might make in the future separately about any additional spending that would be more local. As Alder Person Mayor also stated, I think state statute is really the limiting factor here, and I understand some of the letters that were coming in from the public either questioned that or seemed to not find that important. And I am not an attorney, but I believe that the counsel we have from our attorneys is that what the statute means is not to promote tourism separately, overnight stays, but tourism and conventions that bring people to spend the night in Geneva. So I think we have to demonstrate that however this money is being spent, it is doing that. And I think that the best course to do that is to join the CBB. I respectfully feel that many of the questions that, as I said before, so I'm repeating myself, I really think that most of the questions have been answered. I think there has been perhaps some misunderstanding communicated to other members of the public, and perhaps even members of the Chamber of Commerce. And I, you know, I hope that that can be dispelled, but I think that this is an unalloyed good for Geneva, and it has my wholehearted support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Pashki.
I won't repeat a lot of what's been said, because I agree with Alder Person Bowring and Alder Person Mayor and Alder Person Bruno on many of the points that they've already made. I think one of the key factors here is that we're talking about how the hotel motel tax funds are spent, and the hotels motels have been very clear in their desire for us to make this decision in the affirmative, to join the AACBB. I did reach out to other communities who are members, and I got positive reviews of the return on investment from them. I think, and maybe this is a question for somebody from AACBB to answer, my understanding in terms of the timing with the strategic plan is the strategic plan for the AACBB, I would anticipate, would be significantly different from a city's strategic plan, where I would assume, and maybe I'm wrong, that the AACBB's strategic plan turns into marketing collateral that gets created relatively soon afterwards, and if the City of Geneva is not a member at the time that's happening, there would be some sort of effect of not being a participant in that? If you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir. Just kindly introduce yourself and respond directly to Alder Person Pashki's question.
Mayor, the council, Coret Carlsen, Director of the AACBB. I think the timing process with our strategic plan is, certainly, we would welcome Geneva in at any time. What we're looking at is how are we developing a long-term sales and marketing plan for the regional destination? What we're doing now, we're looking, you know, two, three years out already in terms of our sales efforts. We're talking to people who are booking, whether the meetings or tournaments or motor coach tours, that are coming in '26, '27 already. So our plan is how do we then develop our destination to better serve those markets and create a long-term destination plan for the region, and then an organizational chart for the CBB as we move forward. We're in a real growth phase right now, so we want to make sure that we are behind that and moving our organization forward. So everything we're doing, we're two, three years out already. So that's probably part of what we're looking at, is how do we make sure Geneva is part of that long-range plan and not coming in after the fact and maybe missing some of those sales opportunities that we're pursuing right now.
Thank you. So I don't see this as an either/or. I think we can absolutely support joining the AACBB and continuing to support our chamber. I think they're separate conversations, but I think the benefits to the city and the benefit of putting the hotel motel tax funds towards its intended purpose is the most important thing in this decision, so I support moving forward with this.
Anyone else from the dais who has not yet spoken? Alder Person Ruby?
Thank you. We talked about the emails a little bit. I just wanted to confirm that the emails from Bruce and Kristi Deinst are also...
Deinst.
Deinst, thank you.
Yes.
Are also included in the meeting minutes.
They are. And a lot of those questions that we all are privy to, and the community is privy to, were asked by Mr. and Mrs. Deinst as well.
Sure, sure. So I am curious. I understand the rules, but is the chamber allowed to speak at this meeting?
They are not.
Okay.
This is not a public hearing. I think the chamber, certainly my conversation with the Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce understands that. Those attending likely understand that. This is not a public hearing. This is a matter for the council to determine, decide, and provide direction for.
Was there an opportunity for the chamber to ask us questions?
Yeah. We've had questions for the last three and a half years.
But we haven't been voting on... We haven't been discussing this, adopting this. We haven't...
Actually, yes, we have. In multiple meetings with myself, Chairman of the Board...
But tonight is the vote. And they didn't get the opportunity to speak at our last meeting, which is probably one... Would they have been allowed to then?
It's up to the Chair. It was under Committee of the Whole. But again, with respect to process, this is not a public hearing.
Sure, I understand that.
If you're asking the way of the process, then we're headed...
No, I'm not asking to weave the process. I was asking if and when the chamber, who this most, in my opinion, this most greatly impacts, if they had the opportunity to share concerns or ask questions.
I will state this much, and those of you who wish to refute anything I say, feel free to do so. The chamber has spoken loud and clear, whether through the Chairman, Mr. Olson, whether through other members who have corresponded with us, whether through independent business owners who have also corresponded with us. I think there's somewhere in the neighborhood... I think there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 letters, in my humble opinion, letters that sadly are not factually accurate, but nevertheless have been sent to us. And there are other chamber members, the hotels and others, who have also expressed support. So I think we have provided a heck of an opportunity with regard to discourse and discussion. I'm certain you've spoken to folks, others in the room have acknowledged they have as well, I certainly have too. So I do believe there's been ample opportunity, not the least of which has been. Chairman Olson and I, Stephanie Dawkins, City Administrator, excuse me, Economic Development Director Timoshenko, Mr. Mike Simon, Paula Schmidt, the President of the Board, have met numerous times since January of 2024, and this has always been a topic of discussion as well as, as Mr. Kilburg referenced, the complementary issue of a separate grant program. So I just, I know you don't assume that there's been no discussion, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Well, the next red flag from your comments, if we're getting letters with misinformation, are we not clearly communicating? Why are people not clear on what is happening?
Well, I will, thank you for teeing that up. The reality is this, ladies and gentlemen, and I apologize if this message stings a little bit, but I think it's important. Fear sells. Fear sells unless and until we stop buying it. In conversations with many folks who sent letters today or over the weekend, I was not copied on the distribution of those letters. I received copies from gracious members of this council. Comments were made such as, and I am quoting, "Did you know," to Alderperson Kostarog's point, "the city is looking to, quote, 'defund the chamber.' Did you know that the city is looking to hurt the chamber? Did you know that the city is looking to, quote, 'close down' the chamber?" Nothing could be further from the truth. Many of you know, I've served on this council for quite a while, never in my history of service on this council or as mayor has any one staff or elected official ever suggested, ever advanced, ever considered, or even espoused, "Let's screw the chamber." Not true. Not true at all. In fact, again, to Alderperson Kilburg's statement earlier, we have two parallel paths. The investment in a certified, state-certified Regional Convention and Visitors Bureau, and how do we continue to fund our friends, the Chamber of Commerce, whom we rely on, yes, whom we respect, whom we appreciate, whom we have been partners with since, I believe it's 1969?
Further than that.
Further than that. So for decades. When someone suggests that some people write a letter based on the premise that the city's about to hurt us, what do we think that letter's going to say? When you speak to those who authored those letters and you share with them some of the facts, the response is often, "Oh, okay, got it." There's been significant, calculated, cultivated misinformation delivered, and it's unfortunate that it has become that. Our responsibility as elected officials, I believe, is to discern between falsehoods and facts. The facts are, this investment opportunity is before us, we make a determination. Fact two is, the next opportunity is to determine how best to develop a grant program, as Alderperson Kilburg said, within the confines of state law so that we can provide the Chamber of Commerce with funds that are more flexible, more focused, more measurable, and more accountable. We have not been doing that, as we discovered through our conversations for years. This in no way, shape, or form means that we are out to hurt, disable somehow the Chamber of Commerce. Just the opposite. Just the opposite. We're here to complement, we're here to elevate, we're here to enhance, and we're here to celebrate the success we've enjoyed for decades, but just in a different way. That's it. That's it. Thank you for allowing me to respond.
So again, in response to those comments, I feel that the fears that we're hearing are the result of us not looking at this holistically. We're not giving people the whole picture, we're not telling them the whole story. You're asking us to vote on half of this picture without knowing what the other half even looks like.
There are separate issues.
I understand that, but we should be talking about them together and then voting on them separately, but back to back.
Your recommendation is to bring the two together. Got it. I assume that's what you're stating.
To have the discussion about both.
The topic on the agenda is the investment in the.
Sure, I understand that. But until we understand where the money is coming from and how we will continue to fund the chamber, I can't support this. And I think that it would be a great benefit to a lot of our businesses, our hotels in particular, but without knowing how it's going to affect our entire community, I can't vote on this.
Very well. Anyone else? Before I recognize Alderperson Kilburg, Alderperson Kilburg, the floor is yours, then Swanson.
Okay. Just, again, I don't have issues with Aurora and what they're offering. I think, again, the track or the path in which this process has moved along, I think, has raised some of these questions. I guess the other thing that's been shared is that all of our hotels are supportive of it. But if, as I received a memo here during the last, since our last meeting, from the former general manager who served at the Harrington for a decade, who left recently within the last three or four months, his comment was, "I met with Aurora representatives over the past year, and after hearing their proposals, I did not feel that they offered would be a benefit to the Harrington." So to take the current manager, who's been there in place a few months, his recommendation, I guess I would probably place more credibility with the former manager that spent a decade there and knew what type of people are staying at the Harrington and benefiting from their facility. I guess my other question of Aurora, and again, with all due respect, could he share the reason or the motivation for Naperville leaving Aurora? I believe that they were a part of your bureau at one point in time, but I understand that they've left. Is there an explanation as to why a large community like Naperville would leave a bureau that provides those important services that you offer?
Naperville's never been part of our organization. Naperville has always been their own independent, uncertified CBB. There is a DuPage County CBB, which services that area of Chicagoland, and Naperville is not part of the DuPage County. They do their own thing, but they have never been part of the Aurora Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Okay.
And then, I guess my last point is that the council seems to be somewhat divided on this issue. So to give or allow more time for this process to move forward on a track that I think would be beneficial to the parties involved, both Aurora as well as the other party that we can't refer to.
The Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber of Commerce.
You can certainly refer to it. That's, yeah, we all have, so.
I would move to table a decision on Aurora to December 2nd date certain, and that would allow time for the grant program to move forward over the next three or four weeks so that we could see actually, and give some confidence to the chamber that their needs have been addressed. And again, we're talking about a lot of money here, $510,000 committed over the next, a half a million dollars over the next three years. You know, another approach that we could take with this would be just to funnel the money back into the hotels somehow through some type of a grant program. And I did the calculation, actually, a half a million dollars would facilitate about 7,300 stays over the next three years at these three facilities that we have here in Geneva. That's a lot of nights, and the thing is, if we're looking at meeting the needs of these facilities, these hotels, that would be, that'd be a simple way to do it. And maybe it would be gifting it or using it as some type of a promotion, possibly through the Chamber of Commerce. It's just an idea that I'm throwing out there and trying to give an idea of what a half a million dollars over a three-year period could actually purchase in the way of lodging in the city of Geneva. So with that, I have my motion to table till December 2nd date certain, and if there's a second, then we can have a vote on that. And if it succeeds, then we'll discuss this again in a few weeks. If not, then I guess we're going to be ready to vote.
There's been a motion on the floor to delay this matter till December 2nd date certain. There's been a second by Alderperson Swanson. Speaking to the motion only, members of the council. Alderperson Mayor.
So I don't think there's anybody on council that doesn't support the chamber and isn't likely to support grant opportunities to the chamber. So I think it's important to note that we were going to consider these at the same time, I believe, but because we went past 10 o'clock at one meeting, we deferred the discussion. I don't think there was any indication that we delayed that to cause the whole thing to unwind. I thought that we all supported both aspects of this and that we were going to move forward. So I'm not going to support your motion, but I hope that we can just move to a vote and get this going. Thanks.
And prior to recognizing Alderperson Swanson, just to clarify, the motion is a motion to postpone, not the table.
To a date certain.
To a date certain, yep. Alderperson Swanson.
I was going to talk about the original motion, so I'd like to, after, my point was on the first topic, not on the motion.
Not on the motion?
Yes.
Alderperson Bruno, on the motion to postpone?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we've been working on this, and I, you know, we've been looking for input from the chamber for quite some time. There are benefits to pulling the trigger now, legitimate benefits. I don't see, and as Alderperson Mayor said, we all support the chamber. I'm sure we will come up with a perfectly successful grant program for the chamber. I don't think our decisions here, addressed separately, will impact the grant program that we develop for the chamber. I think there's benefit to getting this moving on a faster timeline, so I would not support the motion to postpone. Thank you.
With respect to the motion to postpone, I think it's important to share with the council and community that there is a clause in the agreement with the Convention and Visitors Bureau that should this city council wish to
terminate.
terminate said agreement. It can do so on 30 days' notice. On the motion to postpone, anyone else? On the motion to postpone, City Clerk, please take your role. A simple majority is required.
Aye.
Kostarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Nay.
Patschke?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Nay.
Bruno?
Bruno, nay.
Ruby?
Aye.
The motion to postpone to a date certain of December 2nd, as offered by Alderperson Kilburg, seconded by Alderperson Swanson, has failed. Four affirmative votes, five negative votes. We're back to the main motion. Alderperson Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor. You eloquently pointed out that misinformation was provided in some of the letters. I would like to correct some of the misinformation that's been put out by this group, and that is that the state statute requires spending to be on heads and beds. I have a copy of the Illinois General Assembly compiled statutes. I'd like to read it into the record, and nowhere does it mention heads and beds. It says, and I quote, "The amounts collected by any municipality pursuant to this section shall be expended by the municipality solely to promote tourism and conventions within that municipality or otherwise to attract non-resident overnight visitors to the municipality." So nowhere does it say heads and beds, and I think tourism is different than overnight stays.
Would you not agree that colloquy is at play here? That folks not residing in the community, staying the night at a hotel, is equivalent to heads and beds?
That's one piece of this.
Okay. Exactly.
And I think bringing people into our community is another piece of it.
Exactly.
Whether or not they stay.
Totally agree.
And just for the record, Geneva spent significant sums of hotel tax to put in our Welcome to Geneva signs, which in no way translated to heads and beds. So just as an aside.
On a good aside.
Thank you.
Anyone?
And I also had another point.
Yes, sir.
That the math doesn't make sense to me. This, we are looking at $176,000 per year based on our taxes, hotel tax, which in relation to the number of beds we have in Geneva is 160. So we're spending over $1,000 a year to increase the occupancy of our hotels, which are already at a decent level, over 60%. So that math doesn't make sense to me, and I think we should take a closer look at some of the numbers there. City of Aurora pays in 225, we're going to be at 176, and it appeared to me that we will be the highest-paying member of this CBB. So I would like more information on that before we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Bowring.
Could I ask a question of the city attorney? I also spent time reading that statute. I am not a trained attorney, so I am hoping to get some clarification. I think there's possibly some lexical ambiguity there, or possibly it's just the fact that I'm not as used to reading and interpreting statutes. I read that and understand that the "or otherwise" is still related to bringing people for overnight stays. Perhaps it could be worded differently, but is that the conventional understanding of this statute?
It is. I will say that much of what comes out of Springfield sometimes is inartful, to be polite, and which keeps the courts very busy. There's been a bevy of litigation with respect to that statute. It is contained pretty tightly to, I mean, it's generated from hotels and motels, and it's to promote tourism and overnight stays. Yes, there's some ancillary components of that, but they are tightly related to tourism and overnight stays. Conventions, for instance.
Sure.
Girl softball tournaments.
But tourism and conventions that are related to or promote overnight stays. Not simply tourism as a standalone, someone coming to Geneva for the day to partake of our bounty.
No, it's generated by overnight stays is the motivating factor.
Okay. So I guess the reason I want a clarification is to me, that is, it is quite a motivating factor to join this, because I think what that does is it makes sure that we're applying the money in the way that state statute requires us to, and opens up the opportunity for us to explore funding other entities, including but not limited to the chamber, out of other funds that are not thus restricted. I think that's a very important point. I would like to say, I really dislike the way that it has been presented, in part by some members of the public and in part by some members of the council, as if it's an either/or. I don't think that joining the CBB comes at the expense of anybody in Geneva, whether it's a business owner or the chamber. I would like to note that there is a diversity of opinion within the chamber as to what the right move is. I think that suggests that everything needs to be taken with a grain of salt. That being said, the opposition does seem to be predicated on the idea that it's going to hurt the chamber, and I think that that is not based in the facts that I have seen. So, thank you.
Alderperson Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderperson Bowring said most of what I wanted, but I think the, you know, I've read that statute several times myself, and given the origin of that tax...
I've, I've read that statute several times myself, and given the origin of that tax, uh, or what that statute doesn't say, there has to be a direct A to B correlation. Promoting tourism broadly within Geneva will have a net effect on heads and beds, if you will. Uh, I, I can, I can work with the CBB, and I would, I would still support the CBB regardless of the interpretation of that statute, uh, 'cause, 'cause I think it, it can work either way. Thanks.
City Clerk, please take the roll call. This is on the motion.
You raised it.
Oh, you did. Alder Person Marx. I didn't see your hand raised. Forgive me. If you'd like to speak?
It, I'm fine.
Okay.
Fine, fine. Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
You're muted.
You're muted.
One more time, Mike. Bruno?
Uh, Bruno, aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Casarad?
Nay.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Uh, the rules allow the mayor to vote. If half the council members, which reaches five, have voted, I vote aye. Moving on, folks, to item 9B. Approve, rrrr, resolutions 2024-109, authorizing the purchase of a 2024 Ford F-150 hybrid truck, which is also on consent. Okay. Item 10, presentation of ordinances and resolutions. Item 10A, consider ordinance number 2024-48, granting preliminary final planned unit development approval and preliminary fine plat of subdivision approval from our friends at Benchmark Developers Incorporated. Motion by Pashke, seconded by Marx. Stephanie, is there anything you want to add before introducing the folks at Benchmark?
Uh, so the applicant Benchmark Developers is seeking approval of a preliminary final plat of subdivision and preliminary final planned unit development for 126-unit residential development in the block bounded by Stevens Street, Ford Street, North River Lane, and North First Street. The proposal includes the preservation of the single-family home located at 305 North First Street, and provides enhancements to the public riverfront access, including 15 angled public parking stalls along the east side of River Lane. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing for the applicant's request on April 25th. The commission unanimously recommended the city council deny the request. Based on the comments provided during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant has submitted updated plans and renderings of the proposed design, which have been posted to the city's website earlier in October on the Developments Project page. It should be noted that these proposed, proposed changes do not impact the requested variations that were presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, the applicant is here this evening and would like to present, um, an overview of those updated plans and renderings. So, I'll ask them to come to the podium and introduce themselves. Thank you.
Uh, how you doing, everybody? Um, my name is Anthony Pecoraro with Benchmark Developers. Um, we have a little slideshow, I'll pull it up right now.
Alder Person Bruno will likely disappear, but he will still be able to see.
Okay. Uh, do I just click the arrows? Probably. Okay. Um, so, again, uh, I am with Benchmark Developers. Um, we have with us our, our team, KNA Architecture. Uh, Ryan is our TIF consultant, um, Jacob and Huffner, civil engineer, Gary Webber and Associates, our landscape architects, KLOA, traffic engineers, Alpha, uh, more engineers, uh, for mechanical, uh, engineering, and then SWK, our attorney as well. Um, so just to briefly introduce the development that I'm sure you guys are, have already taken a look at, but, um, the, the site is located at 302 River Lane, uh, the former Geneva Bottle Works facility. Uh, we are proposing 126 units, which is split up between, I don't know if you can see my cursor, no, between an apartment building, which is 114 units, and 12, uh, townhomes, and then a, an old, uh, an older home, historic home, that we are moving onsite that will act as our leasing and community room facility. Um, our building is gonna have a very high-end hospitality style, um, lobby, which will have some cafe seating, workstations, parcel room, um, you know, the, the, the building and development in general is very high-end and luxury-style development. Um, we're gonna offer our tenants, uh, many amenities, including, um, water sport access to, you know, kayaks, canoes, and any, any sort of other items. Um, you know, as part of our proposal, we, we're also improving, uh, the riverfront, so currently there is a, uh, parking and landscaping just to the south of this development that seems to have stopped at the site. We're continuing that further north, uh, along Fox River, so we're adding 15 public parking spaces, uh, improving the walkpaths. We're burying power lines along Fox River, um, that go north and south, and we are improving some sewer and water mains in the area. Uh, this is a, this is a site plan for the development. You can see on the east side, the right side is a, our U-shaped building, um, all kind of centered around a, a, a second-floor community deck. Now, that deck's gonna have, uh, public grills, fire pits, dining areas. We have a, a green space, which you can kind of let your dog run around a little bit. Um, abachi courts, uh, it's really more of a, a hangout and an extension of your home if you live in the building. Um, to the west, you'd see our 12-town homes and, um, our historically-preserved home as well. Uh, in between those is our, I believe it's 22 parking spaces, uh, that'll mostly be for guest parking and some tenant parking as well. And then on the east side of our development, um, just on the right side of the U-shaped apartment building, are some more parking spaces along the property line along River Lane as well. Um, and then just east of that, on the other side, you'll see the 15 parking spaces, angled parking spaces. Um, actually, let me add, uh, I can't point, but, uh, on the northeast corner, in the top right, you'll see that's the building entrance to the parking garage, which is on the first floor. Um, that's the only in and out for the apartment building. Then we do have two accesses to the rear parking lot and townhome garages, and that's, uh, access from Stevens Street and Ford Street. So, this is just, um, a brief look at the floor plans of the building. You'll see, again, a little bit more detail on the, in the U-shaped apartment building. Um, the white space in the bottom right corner, I'm sorry, bottom left corner are all the amenity areas. Um, we're gonna be providing a fitness area, um, a billiards room, lounge area, actually golf simulator, um, a lot of bells and whistles that the tenants will, will be able to enjoy. Uh, I kind of touched on this, but this is the look, this is the newest iteration of our apartment building. As you can see, the bottom, I'm sorry, the top photo, you'll see that's our building entrance at the, uh, at that southeast corner, um, and then this is another perspective from the northeast corner. Um, it, it is a five-story structure. The first floor is predominantly, uh, parking garage, again, with our lobby and parcel room. Second floor is where most of our amenities are located, including the, the community deck, um, and then three through five are all apartments. Um, you can see kind of a breakdown of our units. There's, uh, 19 studios, mostly one-bedroom, 76 of them. Um, some of those have a, a one-bed plus den, and then two-bedroom apartments as well. The, the apartment building itself has 122 indoor heated parking spaces, um, and then you can see a little bit more list of our, our amenities, which I won't reiterate, but. Um, our townhome component is right here. Uh, you can see a couple of different perspectives as well. Uh, we, we've tried to, try to incorporate some gable looks to kind of have some sort of feel that is similar to the historic preservation, uh, the historic district as well. Um, again, these are 12 units. They are all three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, they all have their own two-car garage. Uh, there's two layouts, you could see that one is roughly 1,600 square feet and the other 1,700 square feet. Um, they all have large balconies in the back, and, uh, and again, they all, these townhomes also have access to all of our amenities in our apartment building. Um, okay, so I'll touch on some of the variances that we're asking for. So, in the front yard setback, the street yard setback, which is off of River Lane, um, you know, by technicality, we are, have a zero-foot setback, but in reality, our apartment building really is 23 feet setback from the property line. Uh, the reason we have a zero-foot setback is our parking spaces on the west side of River Lane, that is on the property line. Um, uh, similarly, on the rear side of the apartment building, we have a zero-foot setback. Again, we're trying to really maximize the use and efficiency of the site, so, um, we slid the building back as far as possible, but we're compensating that by creating a large buffer, and it's, I want to point for you guys, but there's a large buffer between the apartment building and the parking lot and the townhomes as well, so, um, yeah, let's go on, keep going. So, building height as well, uh, our building is 53 feet tall, and that's with parapets. Um, the max building height is 50 feet. You can kind of see how our building is very similar to the comprehensive plan that was, uh, enacted by the city of Geneva. Uh, our townhomes are about two feet shorter than our, our town, I'm sorry, our townhomes in our apartment building is about two feet shorter than the townhomes just northwest of us as well, so the scale and feel of this development and building is really not gonna feel all that different from what's there already. Um, so, uh, our lot coverage variance, our apartment built, this property is divided into two zoning districts. Uh, on the east is our apartment building, on the west is our townhomes. On our east side, we have a lot coverage of 83%. That is above our, the 70% requirement. On the west side, we have a 50% lot coverage, so really, when you look at this as one development, which it really is, um, you know, we, we really are 66, just under two-thirds lot coverage, so that, that, that meets the overall lot coverage that we feel is required. Number five is a, in our, our opinion, more of a technicality. We, we have the townhomes and the historically-preserved home under one lot par- uh, parcel. In reality, this could technically be three parcels, but, um, it is in one, so it is a variance as well. Uh, these are, this is the existing site, you can see the addresses. Um, there's three homes that are being demoed, and one that is being relocated, 305 North First Street. Uh, this is the home that historical preservation felt had the most historical significance. Um, so we are keeping that onsite, we are keeping that at the southwest corner of the property. Again, that's gonna be our leasing and our community room as well. Um, the, the Geneva Bottle Works facility is gonna be demolished as long as, as well as the bacon warehouses as well. Um, these are the existing structures. Um, I, you know, without trying to offend anybody, I, I don't feel like these are providing great significance to the community. I, I really feel like we are providing a, a really good-looking development, um, in a, in an area that really needs some improvement. Uh, so I just want to, I just want to talk about how, how we've gotten to where we are. Uh, it's been a long process. We're, I want to say 18 months into this. So, while you may be first meeting me, uh, we've been behind the scenes working on this for quite a while. Um, this is our first iteration, and I put that in quotes, is because we've probably had 10 different iterations before this even got in front of staff. Um, you could see where we were starting to develop into where we are. Uh, the biggest difference here is obviously there was no historical home that we're preserving, but the building was six stories. Now, this building did not have any other variances besides building height, so the, the one thing that we, or the, the one component that staff felt was really important was that we, we keep the building height somewhat, uh, manageable. So, this building, this six-story building, had two stories of parking, so what we did from this is put all of the parking on one story. Now, that made the footprint of the building really large, right? So, we have to now ask for some zoning, uh, some setback concessions. So, this was, um, this was our, after staff's comments, we tweaked it and got into this development. Now, this was also the one-story parking. Uh, this was presented to the historical preservation. Now, uh, that committee had a lot of public feedback, as well as committee feedback, and they did not like the feel and mass of this building. We took those comments to heart. Uh, this was a very modern industrial feel. We started with this, 'cause we felt that the existing structures were a little bit more industrial, so we tried to keep it that look, but we heard everybody, and, um, we definitely made some changes. Uh, this was a planning and zoning hearing, um, proposal. You know, we tried to adjust color schemes, get the materials more in line with what's around there, but predominantly, it's, it was the same building. Um, and then now we are here. So, uh, now, this is our fourth or fifth iteration, and what we've changed to this point is, uh, and I know Alani's probably better at this than I am, but we've added a significant amount of masonry. Uh, the color scheme, like I said, is very similar to, to development just south of us. Uh, we listened to some of the concerns about the, the blank wall on the east, so we've added some, some landscape along that wall. Um, uh, do you want to touch on this a little bit? Sure?
I mean, he got most of the points. My name is Alani Pecoraro, I'm part of the design team with Benchmark.
What do you think, Toby? Just introduce yourself formally.
Yes, Alani Pecoraro, with Benchmark.
Thank you.
Um, like Anthony mentioned, after, um, planning and the historic preservation, we understood that there was a little bit of, uh, pushback and feed on the look and the feel of the building itself. So, we, um, went ahead, we, like Anthony mentioned, we added a lot more masonry on the, um, east facade of the building. As you can see, it goes up all the way to the fourth floor. Um, we removed grills, um, some of the grills that were in, uh, our parking garage area. Um, this way, it adds more curb appeal. When people walk by it, they're not walking by grills. Um, we incorporated a, uh, part of the green wall with vines, um, coming up the wall. Uh, we also eliminated a lot of the gra- uh, glass railings that were there. Um, the color scheme, like Anthony mentioned, we, um, changed to kind of conform with what's in the neighborhood right now, what other developments have used, um, so we fit in a little bit better. We also added gables to our roofs. Um, we added masonry, uh, landscape, uh, all around it, and we're also, um, as you can see, our sidewalks now connect to the walking path that's already there, kind of, um, somewhat connecting our building to the existing walkpath along the riverfront. Um, and I believe those were the major changes that we made last year.
Um, I have just a few slides of renderings. I could refer back to these if there's questions on something, so I'll just kind of zip through these a little bit. But this is the, uh, okay, this is the southeast corner of the development, again, that front entrance. Um, this is along Ford Street, looking north in between the two, uh, the two structures, the townhomes and the apartments. Again, the back of the building, you can see from here, it's four stories, because the site is unique in that, um, the east side of the property is significantly, uh, lower than the west side. Um, these are elevations, um, and then this is the home that we're removing, and some more townhome figures as well. Uh, I, I just want to point out, so what this development is providing Geneva is, is increased housing options. So, we're providing a, a very high-end apartment building into Geneva. We feel that there's a massive need for this. There's a, there's a, there's a lot of luxury home options, expensive homes. Um, there's a need for a higher-end apartment as well. Um, you know, there, there is a, there has been, as you can see from some of those figures that, um, we've pulled from CoStar, that we had helped getting, uh, getting, over the last five, six years, the increase in vacancy rates in the downtown retail. This building's bringing 126 rooftops, so tenants with affluent incomes that are gonna be spending money in their businesses, um, they're gonna be walking to restaurants, they're gonna be shopping in your shops. This can only help everybody. Uh, again, we're enhancing all the, some public spaces, adding 15 parking spaces, improving the riverfront, including landscaping, and we are providing a long-term investment to the city. You know, uh, we will have employees here, we will be managing the site, and this is going to be a great project for Geneva. And with that, I will take any questions, if you have any.
Questions from the deists for our guests or guests? Seeing none. Alder Person Bruno, I trust you're still with us?
Yes, I, uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I don't have questions for the developer, but, uh, I, I do want to weigh in on the project, if this is the appropriate time.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, so, uh, we've seen a bunch of projects, well, we've seen a number of projects that moved, theoretically would have moved the needle, uh, with housing options, and this project does tick off, uh, a bunch of those boxes that we've longed, hoped to check off. Uh, you know, I watched Planning and Zoning, I watched the HPC. The fact that they denied it, and previous to these, uh, changes that we're seeing in elevations tonight... elevations tonight, I don't think that their denials don't adequately, adequately convey that there really wasn't a lot of light between those commissions and the developer. That, that's to say, uh, I thought they were pretty close to positive recommendations. Uh, we have seen changes based on that input, um, and it recognizes the concern of both those commissions. So, we've, I, I look at this, uh, first, I look at the positives. We get, uh, additional downtown density, we've always wanted that, helps the downtown economy, moves the needle on housing diversity. Uh, I think most of us recognize that we are overre, overweighted in single-family detached housing. We get one-story, no-maintenance living options for an aging population. The parking plan, I, I spent a lot of time, uh, on the State Street Bridge. Uh, I've, you know, just looking at how this would affect the, uh, the visual to the, uh, to the passersby. The parking plan sets back a bulk of this building quite a ways from the river. Uh, I, I superimposed some images, uh, a photo of the shoreline, and in, in my opinion, this substantial, this is substantially less imposing than what's already there, uh, on the riverfront. For the Ford Street and, uh, uh, Stevens Street, or the, well, the, the north and south facades, they've introduced a lot of physical relief to the facade, a lot of visual interest. Uh, I, I thought they did a good job there. Certainly, there were things that I would have liked to have seen. I'd like to have seen this all-electric appliances. I know they're using gas appliances, but I would like to have avoided fossil fuels in there. Uh, it would have been nice to have some portion of this designated affordable. In an ideal world, and I said this at a previous meeting, I would have, uh, really liked to see the entire First Street facade, uh, with the, uh, restored historic homes there, at least on the facade. I don't mind if they've got the interiors, but, um, and, and certainly, I would have liked to see maybe more of an homage to the air, area's historical use and materials, but, but they've made knots to that. So, uh, you know, I spent a lot of time on historic preservation before my time on the council here. Uh, it's always been a balance between, uh, history and the, uh, unavoidable evolution, um, that our community sees. The city has recognized needs, and addressing those needs may require changes, uh, that necessarily diverge from the built environment that we know. Uh, it's true that Geneva has on occasion made it difficult for well-meaning developers to move the needle on important issues, and, uh, um, I'm, I'm glad this has gotten this far where the city council can actually weigh in on this. We, we've seen that the perfect can often be the enemy of the good. Uh, I am not on the fence about this project. Uh, certainly, there are things that I would have liked to have seen, but I believe this project delivers far, far more positives than negatives, uh, and I, I think it'll be a, a great asset for our community. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Alderperson Marx, then Alderperson Bowring.
I was probably one of the biggest skepticals of this. Most of the staff will know, and some of the people on the council. You've come a long way. It does not check all the boxes for me, but I am in support of it now. I, I think you've, you've worked with the staff and the city to come up with something that, that at least is a, is a good middle road, I think, that checks most of the boxes. You're not going to get everything. You didn't get everything you wanted. You didn't get six stories. We didn't get everything I wanted. I think this is going to be a, a great add to that area, and I appreciate your, your effort and time that it took to get to this point, but, but as, as the mayor knows, I was extremely skeptical at first, but, but you've won me over with your work and, and the new plans, so.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Alderperson Bowring.
I will also keep it very short and sweet. Um, I essentially concur with everything that my counterpart for the first ward said, Alderperson Bruno. Um, I, I think it is a balance, um, and I think you've done a good job, um, meeting the concerns that were achievable, brought up by HPC and PZC, um, and I think that this is, um, overall, uh, a big benefit. So, thank you to you and also to our staff. I know it's been a long process, um, and I'm glad, uh, we got here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderperson Pachke.
Um, I would echo the sentiments already shared. Um, I appreciate, um, the work that's gone into this. I am in support of it, in large part due to the findings of fact that staff provided, um, the fact that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. I am more supportive, like others, um, now because of the effort that you all have put into addressing the concerns that were raised by historic preservation and planning and zoning. Um, I do feel like the effort was put in there. I'm excited to see density here, um, and I look forward to seeing this progress. Thank you.
From the dais. City clerk, please take the roll. This is on item 10A, ladies and gentlemen.
Pachke.
Aye.
Swanson.
Nay.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Bruno, aye.
Ruby.
Nay.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
What's the total? Seven in favor and two against. Item 10A has been approved. We jump to item 10B. Consider resolution 2024-110, authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Geneva and Benchmark Developers Incorporated. Is there a motion? Marx makes the motion, Pachke makes the second. Is there anything you'd like to add, Ms. Dawkins?
Sure. Um, so as you've, uh, seen from the previous presentation, the project site is entirely within the Geneva Fox River Redevelopment Project area, also known as TIF III. The total project budget is approximately $44.7 million, and Benchmark has identified a need for TIF assistance. Significant site preparation costs, substantive environmental remediation, infrastructure and utility work, site clearing, building demolition, earthwork, mass excavation, and construction of sidewalks and curbs, in addition to necessary off-site work, including utility improvements, but bearing power near the riverfront, riverland paving and landscaping are driving the need for this assistance. To assist with the review of Benchmark's financials and increment to be generated, the city used a third-party development advisor to conduct the but-for analysis, which has determined that the project cannot reach acceptable industry returns without assistance. An inducement of $8,885,000 is proposed to be reimbursed on a pay-as-you-go basis. The source of funding is 100% of the net increment from the project pins after the school district and library district payments have been made. Um, I would also note that approval this evening would be conditioned upon the city's bond council, um, getting the final approval to some of the bond notes and those things that are contained within this redevelopment agreement. Um, again, we do have our economic development director, Timoshenko, with us to answer any questions as long, and as well as the applicant.
From the dais, questions for either the city economic development director and/or the applicant. Alderperson Marx.
Kathleen, it's for you. I, I just wanted to recap a conversation you and I had. Really, this risk of this is all on the developer, the way this is written, pretty much. I mean, if, if they don't get the increment, it's, it's on them.
That's correct.
That is the way I understood after I talked to you, so I just.
That's correct. There's no city output in advance, and it's a reimbursement basis based on the increment created at this site.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, Mayor, for the, for the public.
Thank you. Alderperson Bruno, remotely.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That, uh, that, that point I wanted to echo is, this is the, uh, the careful and judicious and a low-risk use of, uh, of the TIF, uh, that I think the city does, uh, a good job on, um, not getting out over our skis. So, uh, thank you, Kathleen, and, uh, I'm, uh, I'm supportive of this.
From the dais. City clerk, please take the roll.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Pachke.
Aye.
Swanson.
Nay.
Bowring.
Aye.
Bruno.
Bruno, aye.
Ruby.
Nay.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, two in the negative. Resolution 2024-110 has passed. We jump to item C, 10C. Consider ordinance 2024-49, designating the property located at 949 South Batavia Avenue as an historic landmark. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Pachke. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so in June, the property owner of 949 South Batavia Avenue filed an application to nominate the property for historic landmark designation. The Geneva Historic Preservation Commission held a duly-nosed public hearing, at which time testimony and exhibits were received from the property owner and other interested individuals and organizations. Following the close of the public hearing and deliberation between the commissioners in attendance, the HPC determined by a unanimous vote of seven to zero that the nominated property met the five standards for designation as identified in the Geneva City Code, and therefore recommends designation of 949 South Batavia Avenue as a historic landmark in the city of Geneva. The request for historic landmark designation is a determination separate and apart from current conditions. If the nominated property is designated as a historic landmark by the Geneva City Council, then building condition and potential changes would be considered under a separate review when, when a future applicant seeks a certificate of appropriateness for any proposed work affecting the property. Um, with us this evening, as you met earlier, we have our preservation planner, Jackie Bowling, we have Director DeGroot, and I also, is the applicant here as well? We have the applicant as well.
We do. From the dais, any questions or comments for either of those three individuals? Alderperson Bowring.
I just wanted to say, this is a very cool house. I really enjoyed reading all of the file about it, um, so I just wanted to thank our staff for all of the work they put in on this. Um, it seems like it was a, a tremendous effort, and I'm glad for this, uh, or I'm hopeful that this house will, um, achieve landmark status so that, um, we can retain it. Thank you.
Alderperson Pachke.
I was also incredibly excited to learn about this property. Uh, my son started studying architecture at IIT, so I heard a lot about Mies van der Rohe. Um, so it's exciting to see the history of this home in Geneva, and I thank you for bringing this forward.
Anyone present? Otherwise, I'll ask Alderperson Bruno, who's remote.
He's tapped out.
Oh, he's tapped out. Forgive me. What about Cletus and Trixie? Anybody, okay. Alderperson Mayor, yes.
I just wanted to echo what Alderperson Pachke said. Um, as an architect and as a, um, member of this community for a long time, I was, uh, I found the, the write-up very, very, uh, well-done, and I appreciated all, all aspects of this building and the, the contribution to, uh, architecture as a whole. So, thank you.
Anyone else? For the record, ladies and gentlemen, Alderperson Bruno has signed off for the evening. The clerk will not call his name for a, any of future roll-call votes. City clerk, please take the roll on item 10C.
Bowring.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Pachke.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Eight in the affirmative, a zero in the negative. Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much for your patience and stick-to-itiveness. We jump to item 10D. Consider ordinance number 2024-50, granting a variation to reduce the side yard setback for detached accessory structures from five feet to two feet for 602 McKinley Avenue. Pachke makes the motion, Bowring makes the second. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so the subject property is improved with a single-family detached dwelling and corner street yard attached garage, both of which were remodeled in 2018. The previous owners of the property also constructed a patio along the northern side yard, which was not permitted. The existing patio is set back approximately two feet from the northern property line, and the city of Geneva ordinance, zoning ordinance requires that detached accessory structures, such as patios, to be set back a minimum of five feet in a side yard. The applicants purchased the home in April of 2024 and are proposing to replace the existing patio, as it is in poor repair, with deteriorating steps in areas that are rapidly settling, resulting in uneven sections. The project would also include adding a hot tub and pergola onto the proposed patio, all of which would be maintained in the non-conforming northern side yard setback of two feet. Since the existing patio was never approved by the city and a variation was never received, to reduce the side yard setback, the proposed project requires the approval of a setback variation. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on October 24th, 2024, the commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve the requested variation to modify the side yard setback. And again, we have Director DeGroot with us, and I also believe the applicant is present?
Yes. About the hot tub. Any questions from the dais for either the applicant and/or Mr. DeGroot? Seeing none, sensing none. City clerk, please take the roll call vote.
Pachke.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bowring.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
With a vote of eight, zip, ordinance 2024-50 has been approved. Thank you, sir. Item 10E, consider resolution 2024-111, restating and extending the site plan approval granted by resolution 2023-120 for the construction of a proposed 5,000-square-foot, single-story commercial building and associated site improvements for the property located between 602 and 626 East State Street. Motion by Pachke, seconded by Bowring. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so in November of 2023, resolution 2023-120 granted a site plan approval for the construction of a proposed 5,000-square-foot, single-story commercial building and associated site improvements by J&amp;K Enterprises LLC for the property located between 602 and 626 East State Street. The Geneva zoning ordinance allows site plan approval to be effective for one year unless a building permit has been issued and construction has commenced. The site plan approval granted expires on November 20th, 2024. The owner has requested to restate the previous approval and extend the deadline to obtain building permits and be, begin construction by another year. Director DeGroot is still with us, and also the applicant? Yes.
Questions from the dais. On item 10E. City clerk, please take the roll.
Pachke.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bowring.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, item 10E has been approved by this council. Off to item 10F, consider resolution 2024-112, declaring fire department as surplus, oh, sorry, fire department equipment as surplus property. Bowring, Marx, Dawkins.
Your consideration is a resolution declaring six Scott XC, X3 SCBA air packs, six air cylinders, and six face pieces to be declared surplus property. All of the declared equipment is not compatible and no longer usable. Um, oh, and Chief Antonori is with us tonight. I did give him the night off, but he came anyhow, so.
Questions for the chief. City clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Casarog.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Pachke.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
With eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent, item 10F, resolution 2024-112 has been approved. Item 10G, consider resolution 2024-113, adopting the amended energy risk management policy for participation in PJM.
Okay, the City of Geneva participates as a load-serve entity in the PJM market. As a condition of this activity, PJM requires a risk management policy be adopted and amended as required to update their respective risk management policy. So this update would address anti-money laundering and know-your-customer requirements. After a long day, we do have Superintendent Holton with us to answer any additional questions you might have.
First and foremost, thank you, Superintendent, and your team, for the quick response to the damage done, and of course, our friends in the other communities who also assisted, so. Questions for the superintendent? City Clerk, please take the roll.
Since you joined us this evening, maybe you would be prepared, Aaron, to elaborate on this a little bit more?
I think that's not on the agenda. Point of order, are we allowed to ask about that?
Well, it depends what you're referring to, the PJM or the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant the?
The accident?
The accident.
Mr. Holton?
So, as it was stated kind of the executive summary, we have to have our own risk management policy for PJM. For years, we operated under the risk management policy of INPA, which is the Indiana Municipal Power Agency, who performs all of our market activities for PJM. Then a couple of years, PJM said, no, you have to have your own, so we adopted basically the same one as INPA had. They came to us this year and said, well, we have these, now these anti-money laundering and know-your-customer requirements, and so we want all the load-serving entities to incorporate provisions to address those two subjects. And while we had the risk management open with PJM, they asked a lot of questions about basically how we do business, who we can enter into contracts with, how we enter into contracts with, who's responsible for doing that, who okay's it. And so after about six months of back and forth with PJM, we came up with a document that's before you this evening.
How could money laundering become a part of this potentially? Do you, would you have an example, or is there some history in the industry?
To be honest with you, I'm not real clear from our perspective, since we basically buy power. I think it's, their concern is more if we sold power into PJM, we could, you know, be brought into a transaction where somebody is using that energy as a laundering device, so.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? City Clerk, on item ten G.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Eight votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and one absent. Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-thirteen has been approved. Item ten H, consider resolution twenty-two-four dash one-fourteen, authorizing the issuance of a certificate of completion for General Mills Expansion. Bowring makes the motion, and Marks makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so we have several of these tonight. So, the first one is the certificate of completion for public improvements to accommodate the development, include mobilization, earthwork, water main and services, sanitary main and services, electric, stormwater management, sediment and erosion control, paving, and site improvements. With the certificate of completion, the corresponding letter of credit supplied by the developer of the General Mills Expansion will be reduced to a 15% amount to serve as a one-year warranty on the completed improvements. With us this evening, we have Director Babica, if you have any additional questions.
Questions from the dais for Director Babica. Gummies Ahoy, right?
Gushers.
Gushers. Whatever the hell they are. Gushers it is. God, don't repeat that gummies thing. That probably sounded pretty bad. Thought it was a North Aurora for a second there, I think. City Clerk, let's end this misery and take the roll call.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-fourteen has been approved. Item ten I, consider resolution twenty-two-four dash one-fifteen, authorizing the issuance of a certificate of acceptance for Fox Valley Commerce Center. Pashke makes the motion, and Bowring makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the warranty period for the Fox Valley Commerce Center for public improvements to accommodate the development, including electric earthwork, erosion control, paving, site items, storm sewer system, sanitary sewer system, water main system, landscaping, has now expired. The work has been inspected and found to be acceptable. The resolution for your consideration is the certificate of acceptance for this development. With the COA, the corresponding letter of credit will be returned to the developer. And still with us this evening is Director Babica.
Questions for Director Babica. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-fifteen has been approved, with eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent. Item ten J, consider resolution twenty-two-four dash one-sixteen, authorizing the issuance of a certificate of acceptance for Fona Expansion. Bowring makes the motion. Pashke makes the second. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so the warranty period for the public improvements to accommodate the Fona Expansion, which included erosion control, public water main, and electric transformer, has now expired. The construction has been inspected and found to be acceptable. The resolution for your consideration is the certificate of acceptance for this development, and with the COA, the corresponding letter of credit will be returned to the developer. And with us this evening is Director Babica, who will be happy to answer any questions you might have about this item.
Questions for the director. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With a vote of eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and one absent, resolution twenty-two-four dash one-sixteen has been approved. Item ten K, consider resolution twenty-two-four dash one-seventeen, authorizing the issuance of a certificate of acceptance for Delnor Expansion. We just keep playing ping pong here, don't we? Pashke, Bowring, Dawkins.
All right, so the warranty period for the public improvements to accommodate the Delnor Expansion, which included earthwork and erosion control, sanitary sewer and storm sewer system, has now expired. The construction has been inspected and found to be acceptable. The resolution for your consideration is the certificate of acceptance for this development, and with the COA, the corresponding letter of credit will be returned to the developer. And still with us is Director Babica to answer?
Babica's still standing. Questions or comments for the director? City Clerk, please take the roll.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two-four dash one-seventeen has been approved, with eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. We jump to item eleven, folks. Public comment. We invite anyone still with us to join us at the podium. Mr. Chairman, and then the gentleman in the back.
Thank you all. I just wanted to update you on some things going on with the chamber here in town. This past weekend, we had a very successful Coco Crawl. We had sold 300 tickets. It was a sellout. 299 of them actually picked up their tickets, so there was only one that did not. And we had a number of husband-and-wives duos that were sharing their ticket. So we actually had more than 300 people visiting the town, so that was very successful for us. We do have on Thursday night, the annual dinner, and then, of course, the first weekend in December, we have coming up, the Christmas walk and the house tour. We are looking for volunteers to help us with that, if anybody is so inclined. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Darrell Alderson. I'm a resident of, I was gonna say Tucson, Mayor.
You almost said Tucson.
I'm gonna say, sorry, I'm sorry.
Darrell and I work out of the same gym. We talk about Tucson all the time.
Exactly. We bought a condo on Ford Street with the anticipation that there was gonna be something there in that, the 302 North River block. I have to say that we were not expecting what was just approved. Having said that, we were pleased to know that we are in a historic district. The development that has been proposed, other than maybe one small house, is not my definition personally of historic, or anything that I would associate in Geneva as historic, even as he mentioned, Darrell mentioned. Oh, yeah, we tried to do something on Route 31 to make it look historic. No. The developer did not, in my opinion, address traffic, nor were, did I hear any questions about traffic, about the type of individuals who are currently on North River Lane, and now with a, the development that's been proposed and voted on tonight, is going to increase significantly the traffic. There's safety issues now, older adults fear, really, walking over River Lane to the river, because even though the speed limit is 20 miles an hour, hello, and that area is already a pass-through from Route 38 to North River, to either Ford or Stevens, okay? Also, traffic now, parking, if I may say, on Ford, many times because of, there's cars on both sides, and there's only room for one car passing either one way, so one has to wait, and so forth. So, having said that, I would just like to conclude by saying, I was very impressed with the Historic Preservation Commission. The time that they took, the questions that they ask, their expertise that they provide, and, again, in my humble opinion, they were not in favor of this project at all. Secondly, the Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission, again, very educated, very concerned about Geneva, questioning the variances, questioning the setbacks, questioning virtually all aspects of that development. And then voting seven, I believe it was seven-zero, for this project not to go forward. What was approved tonight, in my opinion, is so-not-Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? New business from the dais. Floor is open for anyone about anything. How about a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting? Motion by Kassarag? Was it? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned from the council meeting. We'll kick off the committee of the whole meeting in just a moment.
Okay, I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting from Monday, November 4th, 2024. My name is Alderperson Richard Marks. I am from the second ward, along with Alderperson Brad Kassarag. Let it be known that all the Alderpersons are here, except Alderperson Bruno. So the meeting is now called to order. First item on the agenda is to approve regular committee of the whole minutes from October 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alderperson Kassarag, second?
Second.
Second by Alderperson Pashke. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Item three A is to consider a draft resolution awarding contract for Geneva Business Park Three Substation Construction to Intron LLC with change orders up to 10% of contract price for a total not to exceed $1,265,000. Do I have a motion? Alderperson Bowring makes the motion, Alderperson Pashke makes the second. Comments? Forgot, sorry.
That's okay. Bids were advertised and opened for the Geneva Business Park Three Substation Construction Project, consisting of construction of a new substation. Four bids were received, and Intron was found to be the lowest acceptable bid. A letter of recommendation was included in tonight's packet from Stanley Consultants, who reviewed and submitted bids, reviewed, excuse me, the submitted bids. The resolution for consideration authorizes the city administrator to execute a contract with Intron and approve change orders up to 10% of the contract price. And with us, we have Superintendent Holton, if you have any additional questions.
Now, are there any questions? Alderperson Kassarag?
Hi, Aaron. I was just wondering how prices are looking on these constructions. I think when we did the first one, it was like hard to find people to bid, or super-long lead times, all that kind of stuff. Is this softening a little bit?
Things are getting better.
Yeah.
We're not back to where we were pre-COVID, but things are considerably better. We're getting multiple bids now when we post a RFP, so.
Is this about in-line? I mean, I know they're not all the same, so you can't just say A to B, but?
Yeah, this was, we're still within the engineer's estimate on the overall, on the overall project costs, so we're happy with what we've gotten so far.
Thank you. That was it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three B is to consider a draft resolution authorizing execution of a development economic incentive agreement between the City of Geneva and MB Five TNT LLC for 204 West State Street. Do I have a motion? Motion by Bowling, seconded by Pashke.
Okay, so the MB Five Hospitality LLC, Marshall McCarty, has a leasehold interest at 204 West State Street, which you may recognize as the former beer cellar. The new concept Bad Alice is described as a cozy place to congregate and celebrate, offering a wide variety of local craft, as well as world-renowned import beers, a tiki-inspired cocktailist, and a fun and comfortable atmosphere. As plans to transform the space were being developed, the city worked with MB Five to incorporate several sprinkler heads into the planned improvements for the project to enhance life safety. This improvement is in keeping with the prior determinations for expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act funds set aside for historic preservation and adaptive reuse. Therefore, a grant award for $36,000 is recommended. This amount is 80% of the estimated sprinkler cost and is approximately 13% of the total project cost for the project. And we do have with us Director Timoshenko, if you have any additional questions.
Any comments or questions? Alderperson Kilburg?
Yeah, I had one.
I think they got one.
Hi.
Hi.
Three or four years ago, when the beer cellar went through this exercise, I think we waived the sprinkler piece. Is this something that the tenant has asked for, or is this something that has been impacted by our recent ordinance changes?
A little bit of both. We worked with the tenant to see if there were ways that, now that there was gonna be a new build-out, if there were ways that we could accomplish additional life safety prevention methods. And it was identified that this could be done And it was identified that this could be done using the domestic water that's coming in, to not have to, you know, cut into the street and do a major renovation. So they were willing to do that, to, you know, up again the life safety at the building. Yes, because of the, because of the change of use had already occurred, so they weren't required to do it, but it was something that we worked together to accomplish.
Yes, I know that the last time that we looked at this, the sprinkling system was considered to be prohibitive, and I think we worked around that issue, working with code enforcement and the fire department, in that this is then a measure that should add additional safety to that portion of State Street. I think, I think as we look at State Street, and as we look at what happened at Stockholme's recently, this is a measure that will help not only ensure the safety of the tenant, but also adjoining properties, so. No, I just, just was wondering, and I guess this would be American Rescue Plan Act funds that's being applied here?
Yes.
It's probably a good use. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, it's unanimous. Item 3C is consider a draft ordinance, accepting settlement agreement and terminating franchise agreement with CMN RUS Inc., Metronet. Do I have a motion? Casarog and Alderson Pashke?
Okay, so CMN RUS Inc., commonly referred to as Metronet, entered into a 10-year non-exclusive franchise agreement in 2017 to provide video services, cable TV, in the City of Geneva. In addition, Metronet also provides internet service connections and residential phone service. Metronet has provided notice to the city of its intent to exit the cable television market and will cease to provide said services. They will continue to provide internet service and residential phone services, however, neither of these services require a franchise agreement with the city. At the time of notification, Metronet reported 168 residential customers and five business customers. These residents and businesses will be able to continue to use Metronet's fiber if desired to stream on the platform of their choice and keep current channels, including local programming. So for your consideration this evening, is a settlement agreement proffered by CMN RUS Inc. to terminate the franchise agreement effective December 10th, 2024. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Are there any comments or questions?
So the way I understand it, then, those that are currently utilizing Metronet's TV services, they'll continue?
No, those who are currently using Metronet's cable TV services have been notified that they will no longer be offering that as of December 10th.
Okay.
Because I'm one of those subscribers, as is Attorney Radovich, so we've been lamenting together.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous again. Item 4 is public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Yes.
At our retreat on Saturday, the topic of video gaming came up, and I did pull together some numbers, so anyone that would be interested in seeing what type of revenue it might generate, I've got a copy.
New business?
Yeah, we were going to new business, we were going to new business, so that's fine. No, that's okay, that's fine.
You want me to pass it out?
You can, if you wish.
Is it all right?
Yeah. We hadn't said new business yet, so.
We were heading there.
There you go.
You need more?
Nope, no, I'm giving you one back.
You pass this round. I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Is there any other new business? Okay, we'll go to, thank you. We will go to item 6, closed session on collective negotiating matters between the public body, its employees, or the representatives, 5 ILCS 122, small c, 2, that's one item. The setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public party, body, 5 ILCS 122, small c, 6, that's item number 2 in there. Pending litigation, under 5 ILCS 122, small c, 11, that's the third item. Discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for the purpose of approval by the body of the minutes, or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.6, 5 ILCS 122, c, 21. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Casarog, seconded by Pashke. Does this require a roll call? This requires a roll call, so if you could please take a roll call, thank you. Yes, that's fine.
Casarog?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby? Aye.
Okay, the motion approved unanimously. We will now, all public will need to leave, but just so that everyone knows, we will come out of closed session, back into open session to approve certain closed session minutes and approve of the destruction of certain closed session audio recordings. We will have that on the agenda, so we will go into closed session as soon as, Ms. Dawkins says we can.
Don't break the furniture.
I need now a motion to go back into open session.
Some of...
Motion by Bowring this time, seconded by Casarog?
Individual vote.
I need a roll call, please.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno? Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Okay, back in open session we are.
Mr. Chair, would you like to make a motion? No, good time?
Yeah, what I'm waiting for is the motion.
To approve for release, city council closed session minutes, do I say the dates?
Yes, please.
For full release for February 2nd, 2022, partial release September 12th, 2022, partial release June 19th, 2023, same motion or separate motion for...
Same.
And also to approve the destruction of the city council closed session audio recordings from July 2022 through April 2023.
I have a motion by Alderson Casarog?
Second.
Second by Alderson Pashke. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, seeing none? I need a roll call, sorry.
Casarog?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Ruby? Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We are at the witching hour, I need a motion for adjournment. I'll give it to Alderson Swanson, makes the motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
You can choose to keep or turn in because they've been released, so no longer...
The witching hour is over, meeting is adjourned.